I know that she's not gonna see us, so it's like yik yak. Because I'm never gonna know what to say.
You're living in the dark.
I had to take a survey today at work on our IT stuff. Some of the questions they got into basically were asking if you ever broke policy.
You ever did what?
If you ever break policy.
I thought you said. I thought you said break when.
Never, I've never used this from your personal ID.
It was like, is there a policy against loading non-coven sponsored software on a laptop?
We're taking home an extra pencil?
Actually, I think I said, I'm not sure. And then, and I know that hurts. And it's the thing about have you ever done this?
I don't think so. Don't look at my IP address.
I'm not selling crypto.
I got 629.
Actually, I'm sending how to get your warranty back to somebody right now. Yes, I can.
Good old field and stream.
Ready? Bang the hammer. And I gotta dig a pin out of my purse. Gavel us in. Yeah, gavel us out.
I am, thank you. I tell you, that was like, that's the first time I've been sick in three years.
Your mic's dead. Really loud.
Really?
See, he's been hanging around me too much. That's why he's sick.
No, he's not doing. Yes, he can participate. But we don't, Jamie will have to share a mic. If Dominic has anything to add. Dominic?
Do something.
He can't vote, but he can comment. We still gotta get the policy.
Policy don't matter.
He gets to participate, so do mine. Please tell John Madden, make sure one of you helping has the mic.
Do not talk without the microphone. Bang it. We could call the meeting to order. So everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, we are all here. Before I get asked for an approval of the agenda, we wanted to let everybody know our IT group is trying to livestream the meeting tonight. So it's our first attempt. Hopefully, everything will go as planned. And we also wanted to welcome Dominic to the table with us tonight. He's our new student board advisor. Shayla's out of town. Hopefully, she'll be at our next meeting. Our last meeting, we talked about being able to add the student advisors where they can come in, they get to participate with our meetings, they get to have conversations with us. So we're looking forward. Welcome. We're glad you're here. Okay, can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to communications, and we will start with recognition. We have three different groups here. Can I have Fordor Elementary up first?
Kevin, you and Jamie are doing pictures with all the kids.
Fordor Junior Counselors is a group of students from each second through fifth grade classrooms. Each semester, twenty-six new students have the chance to become trained as a junior counselor.
We learn mediation skills from Mrs. Bright so we can help the kids in our classroom solve problems. We serve, we serve as ambassadors for new students, teaching them the routines at Fordor and helping them make friends.
And I should have introduced, this is Kyle Rainey and Taylor Calender. They are two of our junior counselors that are in fifth grade.
And I'm Mrs. Bright. I am the sponsor for this group. And the last thing we wanted to let you know is that we do a service project every semester. And our service project actually, starting next week, where we are going to be, these little blue butterflies are to remember someone who's passed away that's special to you. And they're gonna be fifty cents apiece. And we're going to donate that money to Annie's Hope, which is an organization that helps families and kids who are grieving. And we're gonna put these up in our cafeteria and kind of make a big memory wall for all our kids and families.
Very nice.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you once again. Thank you for this opportunity, this opportunity to come up and to speak to you about a lot of the wonderful things that are happening at Fordor Elementary. And so, as you just heard, a little bit about Junior Counselors, which has been a great program. Ms. Bright, this has been going on for what, four years now? Five years. I lose track of time. But it's been a great program to see student ownership and them really be able to facilitate great conversations among students when things come up. So really empowering the students to solve problems among the school. So I'm really proud of the work that Mrs. Bright and her students have done. Also, I want to talk to you about a couple of other things that are going on. We have a special event, and Dr. Gaines has been involved with this, Breakfast with Books. This has been put on by our community goal team at Fordor Elementary. And so, a little bit about it, as always, Fordor staff looks for opportunities to invite our families and community members to take part in our students' learning and development. Each month, we invite families and friends to Fordor before school begins to eat breakfast with their children and to share the time reading a great book together. Not only do parents and children read together, but we also have special guest readers that share their favorite books with the audience. Most recently, we had a former reading teacher, now retired, Margie Shaughnessy, as our guest reader. Guest readers have included teachers, parents, and grandparents, police officers, and of course, Dr. Gaines. It's a wonderful event that really brings families together before school starts and to, of course, to promote literacy within our students. So really, really a fun event. And typically, we have anywhere from eighty to a hundred families that attend. So it's a big event. We also recently received a grant through the Monsanto Fund First Robotics Grant. This was awarded to Amanda Wyatt, Justina Pryor, and then Shelley Jackson. They will use the grant to purchase supplies for the robotics club at Fordor Elementary for fourth grade students. The students will use, will use basic engineering concepts to build a model of Lego elements. They will share their knowledge through a learning poster, and that will be presented. I believe there's a conference that will be shared with other schools that received the award. So we're looking forward to that. And then also, we have fifth grade tutors that have been working with kindergarten and first grade students at Fordor. And so, more than ever, teachers are providing opportunities for students to collaborate with one another and to share in their learning. Teachers at Fordor are also providing opportunities for fifth grade students to tutor kindergarten and first grade students in the areas of ELA and math. Between eight forty-five and nine AM, fifth grade students are helping younger students with letter and number ID, letter sounds, and improving their knowledge of sight words. So we are building future teachers at Fordor. So it's exciting to see the work they're doing. And then tomorrow, just one more special event. Fordor is honoring our veterans. And Fordor will honor veterans during a school-wide assembly. Students wrote and shared over five hundred letters to veterans across the state of Missouri, thanking them for their bravery and courage and serving our country. Veterans in our community are invited to attend our assembly and be acknowledged by staff and students. There will be a special presentation by Honor Flight, an important organization that raises funds to send veterans to war memorials in Washington DC. So that will be taking place tomorrow afternoon at Fordor. So you're invited as well. But these are some, just some of the wonderful things that are happening at Fordor. And it's been honored to share those with you.
What time is that?
So we have, we're gonna have two, actually. We have kindergarten to second grade, that begins at one fifteen. And then we have, next one's from two fifteen to two forty-five for third through fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We could have Woolen come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see, I like to bring a big group with me. It makes me feel important. So what we would like to talk about with our Woolen kids is just how much leadership they display across our school. It's something that we've worked on for many years, and we're really proud of all the things that they do. So I have three groups of students that are gonna talk with you tonight. I've got students from our student council, students from our drama club that just recently had a really wonderful performance for, would you say, two hundred people? In our gymnasium. And then we have a group of kids from our character council. So I'm gonna start off, we're gonna start off with student council. And I have Luke and Charlie, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about their organization.
Well, for student council at Woolen Elementary, we collect box tops to support our school for recess equipment or indoor games for our teachers and staff. And we, each box top is ten cents each. So that goes toward going to recess equipment for our whole school and for each grade. And then that also goes for indoor equipment and indoor games for our, for each classroom teacher. And this year, for indoor games, we are going to survey each teacher, and we are going to see what they want us to get them for our box tops this year. And for our tab tops, which are on soda cans, if you pop them off, and those go to a children's hospital called the Ronald McDonald House. And that is for sick children and their families. So their families can get a good home to stay in the Ronald McDonald House so they can take care of their children while having a good home and can stay there and have their children get support and make sure they're happy. And we filled up last year a whole cafeteria trash can of tab tops. And we would like to double that list this year. And we really appreciated it last year, and we would like to double it this year.
This is Sumner. Student council is starting a kindness challenge. We will challenge the entire school to do acts of kindness. We know when, we know that when kindness starts, it causes a chain reaction. Students will create a paper chain to represent their acts of kindness. We will put the chain where everyone can see kindness is contagious.
And then, as I said a moment ago, our next two boys that are going to talk about their drama club performance are Derek and Brian.
Hi. My name is Derek Don Hugh. I am in Woolen Elementary in fifth grade.
Hi, my name's Brian Vernon, and I'm in fifth grade in Woolen Elementary. We take part in the same class. And we are here to represent Drama Club. And when we first joined Drama Club, well, this goes for me. When I first joined Drama Club, I didn't have very much self-esteem in myself, if you know what I mean. And joining Drama Club really helped me build that back up and also build my character back up.
Drama Club is a great club because also with all the fun you're gonna have in Drama Club, you got perfect dates for, well, for me and him. It worked with all our other stuff we had to do after school. And it was fun to make new friends at Drama Club.
Me, I've got some girls from our character council, and we have Alyssa, Jordan, Alexandra, Kelly, and Margie.
Hi, we are student, students from Woolen Character Council. My name is Alyssa. This is Margie, Kelly, Alex, and Jordan. Character Council is a group of four, third through fifth grade students who apply to become members of this after-school club. We meet once a month.
Character Council's mission is to make Woolen, our community and our world, a better place by helping others. We will teach about good character by being leaders and modeling respect, responsibility, and kindness. We wrote this mission together, together at our first meeting this year.
Last year, we helped others by working with church on the streets. We collected old backpacks and donated them to be filled with food for people in need. We also took a field trip to feed my people, and we were able to volunteer our time there, collecting and organizing donations. We learned a lot about how organization helps our community.
This year, this year, we have adopted a large family for Christmas. We are currently working on organizing this drive. And then we'll wrap all the gifts so that they may have a great Christmas. Other members of our club are doing exciting things too, like making friendship bracelets and cards for teachers to hand out to students in need of a smile.
We like being in Character Council because we like helping others. We also like to inspire kids to be better people, and we like being, and we enjoy being leaders in our school and community.
Thank you. And I do need to tell you who are their sponsors are. So for Drama Club, we have Dr. Amy George and Mr. Renato Durante. Student council is Mrs. Suzanne Schmidt and Mrs. Shannon Desha. So is Mrs. Megan Ochoa, and then Miss Sarah Herman, so.
Guys, very much. Thank you all. Is there a place on our website where we can find out what all the different clubs are trying to collect among our district? Do we have anything like that? No, what they're trying to collect, you know?
Like what they're currently collecting.
I'm probably done. Like the tab tops or the, the, you know, it'd be kind of cool if we could just see who's trying to collect what. And then, you know, if we have a lot of that, give it to them, you know?
It's a good point.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, if we knew, we'd.
If we knew what they were collecting.
Okay, can we have the NEA come up?
I always find Laura with her balloons.
Yeah. You can't hide, Laura.
No, I can't. And this almost seems, after seeing the presentations from Fordor and Woolen, it's obvious that we're building students of character without singling individual students out. But I still think it's a great idea. I am here to present, and I'm gonna go ahead and get these to the girls so I can read something about them. There you go. And these are for you, also. These are our students who are being recognized for the character word of November, which is courage. We have Andrea Gandhi from Oakville Middle School. And she, also to my left, we have Liliana Magana. I apologize, Liliana. I'm so sorry. Andrea's teacher said that Andrea is not afraid to do what is right. She asks for help when she needs it. She is good, nice to her friends, and she helps whenever she can. And Liliana's teacher said that Liliana works hard to overcoming, to overcome obstacles while staying positive. So we wanted to present both of these young ladies with, we have certificates for them. You can see, we have some other little things, and there's a gift card in there as well. And Mrs. Stormer, if you would come out and pose with them so they can get their pictures made, that would be one of the.
I think she's more for the job.
Yep, yeah, waiting in the weeds, in the green room.
Oh, the weeds.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. We have an amazing group of kids. Yes, we do. We really do.
What a guy.
Okay, next is open period for patron comments. We have nobody signed up for the first section, so we will move on to standing committee reports.
What about donations?
No, I don't have anything on them.
Are we gonna do finance, or the committee report?
Yes, that's what we're doing right now.
Somebody wanna report on finance?
Yes.
Yeah. Somebody does.
Okay, so we had a finance committee meeting last night. I'm gonna go through a few things with this because we got into quite a bit, especially with Choice School of Innovation. So we're gonna primarily focus on that. So the first thing that I would say the finance committee all agreed on was that Prop R and Prop A funds have to be, continue to be used for their intended purposes. The Choice School of Innovation is not going to pull from those funds. Everybody in that meeting was on that same page. The finance committee is charged with making sure that we live up to those promises, and that is still in full force. Marshall and the finance committee are looking at a full estimate of startup costs. So year-one costs and five-year operating costs. They're gonna consider potential revenue and expense situations in three ways. What's the most probable? What is the potential worst case? What's the potential best case? So that we don't get caught unaware if things kind of take a turn against us or what could happen if things kind of go our way. There is an estimate spreadsheet that they have that has a lot of line items on it. So they're looking at things in pretty good detail. It gets into building renovations, playground, library books, furniture, teachers, custodians, a whole bunch of other things. I only bring those up just basically to point out that they are looking at the details of an estimate, not just doing real high level. It's also gonna get into scope costs. If scope is at Whittle, what might have to be done there? Or if it's at a rental property, how much that would come out to. If the finance committee concludes that there is money available for Choice School of Innovation, that we're not gonna blow the budget, they are going to also tell us where that is coming from. So that that is upfront, so that we know essentially the location. Is it potentially something like, one thing I think that happened is personal property taxes were a little bit better for revenue this year. You know, if that's the source of some of this, then that's going to be explicitly stated so that there's not this thought or belief that it may have come from somewhere else where it shouldn't be coming from. They're gonna meet again in December, get an update. And I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna go into this. We also talked a little bit just about how it fits into the strategic plan. So it's not really a thing that the finance committee is set with as far as determining that, but we did talk about it just to kind of, to figure it out. And when you look at the strategic plan, the first part of that is student preparation. Essentially, every student being able to demonstrate knowledge and skills necessary to perform at the next level. Measures that that gets into student performance on state testing, attendance, formative assessment, individual student passion for learning. I think one of the big reasons for this is that student passion for learning, it is a completely different model from that traditional classroom, that problem-based solving. So I think it fits into that pretty well. We're gonna be getting into testing performance, how we did this last year a little bit later in this meeting, so I'm not going to get too much into that. But I think we're also gonna talk a little bit about what some people have a concern with, of how does this help us as far as our test score portion? There's an action plan in the strategic plan about developing a five-year rigorous adult student learning model, including a focus on students driving the learning, which this definitely gets into. It says the plan will be reading expectations for the classroom with an emphasis on continuous improvement. The whole model of problem-based solving really gets into that. So I've been asked the question a couple of times, how does this fit into the strategic plan? And I think when you really look at the strategic plan and what this model of education is, it does fit in it. We still have to talk about if, what the costs are and how all that goes into our overall budget, where all that's coming from. So this doesn't mean that we're definitely going down that road. But I think when you look at strategic plan, it does fit. So that's kind of the summary I have.
Larry, do you wanna talk policy? We met Monday night.
We really didn't discuss very much what we did. We looked at, I believe there were two policies that were open, one of which we'll consider this evening, and the other one was based on some feedback that we got from Marshall. And then I think we were given another, I wanna say a dozen, policies to start looking at now with the expectation. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to meet before December and perhaps push some of those forward.
I could just add for the finance committee, one of the things that was also kind of discussed was, and I think Larry phrased it really well, the election, what'd you say, at eleven o'clock on Tuesday?
At eleven o'clock on Tuesday night, the economic outlook for education in this state changed.
Changed, yeah. I like the way you phrase that. So with the election, with one-party control in both Missouri and at the federal level, there's a lot of uncertainty over what's coming with education policy. There's uncertainty with funding. So unfortunately, we just don't know where some of those things are headed. But it could affect our, what we get from the state or the federal government. And plus, with interest rates just really starting to rise, that might affect home values as well. So just a lot of uncertainty with the finances, the district, the revenues we receive, state and locally.
Has anybody else had any committee meetings?
I could talk about my surgery.
I don't think that was a committee. Okay, let's move on. Okay, action items by consent. We have five A, reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of the same. B, financials for September. C, warrants for October. D, approval of resignation, leave, contract, and/or employee hire. D, curriculum revisions. F, established machinery for annual school board election. G, policy revisions. And H, approval of bank bid. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Jamie, you look like the Cheshire Cat over there. Okay.
I don't typically let that many things group consent.
They're all playing.
Very nice. Okay, moving on to student achievement.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good evening.
Good. How are you? Good. You got my PowerPoint?
Yes.
My PowerPoint? Oh, sorry. I didn't know what was up. Thank you. Okay, so this evening, what I'm going to be doing for you is giving you an overview of our annual, annual performance report, which is part of the Missouri School Improvement Process, Cycle Five. And I'm gonna start by just going over kind of the basics of how that report is developed, kind of give you a review. This is for you who've been on the board. You've heard this before. But once a year, I know, it's, it's all kind of a good review of information. So our annual performance report is based on five areas. So, our annual performance report is based on five areas: academic achievement, subgroup achievement, college and career readiness, attendance, and graduation. For each of those areas, it's based on three years of data, and it's an average of those three years of data, and I'll go into more detail about that as I go through each section. So when we look at our overall annual performance report, we earned a total of 129 out of a possible 140 points, which gave us a 92.1% on our APR report. And I'll explain more, like I said, as we go through the details of the report. When you look at total academic achievement, that is based on, we get one score for each content area. So for English Language Arts, we get a score, and that's based off of our MAP Performance Index scores for grade level assessments in third through eighth grade, and in addition, our English II and of course exam. For our English Language Arts, we earned 16 out of 16 points. For mathematics, that's based off of our third through eighth grade grade level assessments and our Algebra I test for our end-of-course exam, and then Algebra II for our students that take Algebra I in middle school. And for our mathematics, we earned 12 out of 16 points. For science, those are grade span tests, and that's based off of our fifth grade, our eighth grade grade level assessment, and our biology end-of-course assessment, and we earned 16 out of 16 possible points on that. And for social studies, it's based off of our government EOC. That's the only test that is for the social studies content, and we earned five out of eight, and I'm going to explain that in a little bit more detail about that score as I go through this report. So we earned a total of 49 points this year for our overall academic achievement. When we talk about the government, what I want to, for you guys to understand, if you remember, a few years ago, we realigned our courses in social studies to better fit the needs of our students. And we moved our government course from a freshman-level course to a junior-level course. What that resulted in is that last year, only 92 students took the government EOC in comparison to the year before, when over 900 students took the EOC. The 92 students that took that EOC last year are our students who struggled with the course and had repeated the course, so they are students who just struggle more with the government class. So that will happen again this year, I do want you to know that, because we will not have a government class until next year again, when we have all of the students taking government. We do expect, we had seen a trend up, we had done a ton of work with government, we had done a bunch of training with our special education teachers, with, we were doing collaborative training, we did that a few years ago, and we do expect to see that trend continue. And with moving that government class to 11th grade, which we feel better fits the needs of students closer to when they are making decisions on the types of issues that are studied in government class, that we will continue to see better performance in that area. When we look at subgroup achievement, how that works is the scores are recalculated for our students that fall into what's called our super subgroup. And there are five categories of students that fall into the super subgroup: black, Hispanic, English language learners, free and reduced lunch, and special education students. So their scores are recalculated, that MPI is recalculated, and we earn points based on that. So for English Language Arts, we earned four out of four possible points, which was an increase from last year. In mathematics, we earned two out of four possible points. In science, we earned three out of four, and in social studies, we earned one out of two. There are less points in social studies because, once again, there is that, only that one assessment that is given. So for our subgroup achievement, we earned a total of 10 out of 14 points for our students. To give you more data, and we want to be careful about looking at data, I want to give you some background, remind you of some background, history and knowledge about what's been going on in the state of Missouri when it comes to standards and when it comes to assessment. Over the last three years, we've had three different sets of standards, and we've had three different assessments. In 2014, we had the old grade level expectations and course level expectations, and that was an assessment, a different assessment. Then in 2015 is when we had the Common Core State Standards, and we had the Smarter Balance Assessment. And this past year in 2016 is when we were then, had to align to the Missouri Learning Standards, and we had the new Missouri Assessment. So for three years, we've had different assessments and different data. So in comparing years of data, it is actually very difficult to do at this time, so the best thing that we feel can help us, give us some knowledge to look at, is our comparison to state averages. This chart that you see in front of you now is our scores in Melville in English Language Arts at each grade level compared to the state average. The blue bar is Melville scores, and the red bar is the state average. We are performing above state average in every grade level in English Language Arts except fourth grade. We do contribute that to, we have put a lot of focus on English Language Arts in our curriculum. We've made a lot of changes in that area. We have our interventionists now, that has just started this year. We have made changes in curriculum with our Lucy Hawkins adoption and our reading and writing units of study. But that has been a main focus for our district for a very, very long time, English Language Arts has been. When you look at the MAP Performance Index, like I said, you have to be very careful because that's three years of average data when you get an MPI. So it's, for example, 2014 was 2012, 2013 and 2014 scores averaged together to give us that number. And because it's three different years of test, the best way to look at this data is really to look at the cohorts, which is even still a little dangerous to do, but if you look at the green bar for each grade level, that would be the cohort moving up. I'm sorry, if you look at the, start, yeah, the green bar going, no, the, sorry. You start with the blue bar, then you go to the red bar, then you go to the green bar. See, I'm confusing myself even. It's when you look at this data too long. So when you, when you look at the, when you look at third grade, when they were in third grade compared to where they're at in fourth grade, compared to where they're at in fifth grade, you see that there, we are having gains in the MPI score. Does that make sense? So you're looking at the first chart, then you look at the second, the second set of bars, because that's the cohort of students moving across.
The same set of students.
Same set of students.
Third, fourth, and fifth.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay? And then when you go to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's a little, you don't see, it's a little more balanced at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. However, we have started this year, we, you just approved, actually, our curriculum that we've been reviewing this year with English Language Arts, and we are in the process of looking at some additional supports at middle school to continue the work that's been done at elementary into middle school. When we go to mathematics, unfortunately, our scores do not look as positive as we would like them to. We are performing below the state average in all grade levels except seventh grade and our high school Algebra I EOC. I do want to give you a little bit more information to explain this a little bit as well. Just so you understand, when it's broken out this way, the eighth grade scores, for example, on this chart, do not include, they're not going to include any students who are in our higher-level math classes in eighth grade because those students are taking algebra, so their scores are included in the algebra scores, they're not in the eighth grade scores. Does that make sense? Okay? So we have been aware for the last few years that mathematics has been a concern. We've started work, we started work last year when we noticed this in middle school. And some of the things that we've done, because if you look at, if you look at our MPIs across, you see the trend is not like it was in English Language Arts, like we taught, like I explained, the trend going across. So when you, when you look at some of the things that we've done, last year, when we looked at our scores, we decided that we needed to make some immediate, we need to bring in some immediate professional development. So we reached out to Tammy Pop, some of you might know Tammy Pop, she was an Oakville High School math teacher. She was, she's an expert in math. We brought her in, and we did, immediately last year, started to do some professional development with our middle school math teachers, because that is an area where we did see, we really took a turn in the direction we did not want to go. What we've continued to do with that is, last year, we also reviewed our middle school math curriculum, which you guys approved, and we did buy resources to help support middle school math that were implemented this school year. And as part of that, we also included a lot of, there's, the program that we purchased has a lot of technology-enhanced items. Because the other thing we do know that has been a struggle for our students is, two years ago in 2015 was the first year that third through eighth graders took their assessment online. Before that, they had always done a paper pencil assessment, and the math assessment has been difficult for the students because of the manipulation of the different tools that they have to use to take the test. And unfortunately, when it comes to the MAP test, teachers cannot assist students, and students are used to their teachers assisting them. So we're hoping with the improvement of what we've done with middle school math, and we've brought in those tools, that students are going to have more practice with utilizing those tools, and they'll become much more comfortable and familiar with those things, which will also help. In addition to the new, the training, we've brought in Carnegie Math, that is doing training with all of our middle school and high school teachers. And we are also, if you remember back when I did my professional development presentation a few weeks, a month ago, we also were doing a pilot at Berkeley Middle School with coaching with Carnegie Math with all of our middle school math teachers at Berkeley. And if we find that to be successful, the plan is that we will continue that support into next year. In addition, at elementary, we are aware that the scores are not where we would like them to be either in math. So next year, we are supposed to be reviewing social studies at elementary, that is where our curriculum cycle is at currently. However, with the continued concern and with the change in standards again, we feel that math is going to be the next area we need to review at elementary and need to start to provide professional development and support to our elementary teachers in the area of mathematics. Now that we have that opportunity with, with the great support that we had and the additional professional development funds we have, we have a lot more opportunity than we did in the past to provide that support and training to our teachers as well. That's what allowed us to bring in that Carnegie training this year. In addition to that, with the continuous classroom improvement and training that we are doing through the Shipley organization at four of our elementaries that we will continue to roll out over the next few years at our other elementaries, those schools have chosen math as their area of focus because our elementary principals are aware that that is an area of concern. So they are doing their PDSA cycles, their Plan Do Study Act cycles, and looking at mathematics and gathering math data to analyze and study. We also did develop benchmark assessments in elementary math that we just finished administering, our first round of. In fact, people are still wrapping up their scoring of those right now. And we're going to continue to utilize those assessments to look at data and to look at the standards and see where our areas of weakness are. Those benchmark assessments were developed off of the new standards that were just approved by the State Board of Education in the spring. Moving on to science, we are performing above the state average in the area of science. And when you look at our high school end-of-course exams, our performance has been very high in those areas. And I, the other, the thing to remember with end-of-course exams, those have actually been an easier target because those tests haven't changed. They've been the same for the last three years, and they are very focused, and they are on a set, set of, set of standards, and they are online, and our high school students have one-to-one computers. So there's lots of things that are different for our high school students. The biggest thing, though, being that it's been on the same set of standards, so we haven't had a moving target for the last three years. When we talk about college and career readiness, that includes our ACT scores, our SAT scores, advanced placement courses, dual credit, dual enrollment, and post-secondary placement, and we earned 30 out of 30 points for college and career readiness standards. For attendance, we earn points based on our 90% attendance rate, so we get points for every student who has 90% attendance or better. We earned 10 out of 10 for that. And last year, our 90% attendance rate, 92.4% of our students had 90% or better attendance. So does that make sense? It's kind of confusing. Okay? And then graduation rates, we earned 30 out of 30 points with graduation, and our, they calculate your graduation rate, they do a four-year rate, a five-year rate, a six-year rate, and a seven-year rate, because we have students who take longer than the traditional students who complete high school, and we get the highest score for that. The graduation rate that we typically have been looking at is our five-year graduation rate, and last year, our five-year graduation rate was 95.4%. So accredited, they really don't talk a lot about accredited with distinction anymore because, but it's 90% or better points, your score's supposed to be above 90%, which we are above, for accreditation purposes. I've already talked a little bit about some of the action steps that we have put in place. We're working on the development of assessments. I talked about the benchmark assessments at elementary. I talked about the continuous classroom improvement. The other thing that we do have at middle school is our STEM initiative, our Science, Engineering, Technology, and Mathematics Initiative with Discovery Education, where all of our middle school teachers went through training this summer. And then we have our STEM innovators that are going through additional training, eight each middle school, that are also getting coaching, six days of coaching this year, and they're bringing that back to the building and helping support that implementation in the building. We also have our Kagan Student Engagement Professional Development that we are doing at our high schools, in addition to middle, or, I'm sorry, elementary schools who had not finished that initiative in the past. And then I also already talked about the Carnegie Math training and coaching throughout the presentation. So at this time, I will take questions that you have, because I'm sure you have some.
My only question was, is, when you mentioned the subgroups, did they not add another one this year called mix?
No.
They did not add that?
For the super subgroup that counts for, there are other subgroups that we, that there's data on that are not part of the super subgroup.
Not part of this, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead. Somebody start.
I'll start.
You have a whole list?
Perfect. Let her rip. I have a few questions. So I think all the professional development that's going on is great, and I'm very supportive. I've always identified that in the past. I do have some questions about certain numbers, but I have an overarching question, and that is, we've identified that we have gaps. Clearly, we are not at levels where we want to be in some areas that we've noticed. So professional development takes time, and the outcomes of that take time. So what are we doing right now for our students who are enrolled, who are in elementary, not performing at a math level that we would like for them to be performing at, going into middle school, where we've had some PD, that's great. What are we doing for those children who are now going into middle school who might be, and I use might because we don't know, but might be behind in math versus where they, where we would like for them coming into middle school?
Talking intervention, intervention?
Yeah, I want to know what, what are we doing? What resources are we, are we providing those students if we haven't had an opportunity to do the PD, or if we have had the opportunity to do the PD, but we haven't been able to cycle through it, much like you described with your government class? So what are we doing?
Well, part of that, I already, I described about the continuous classroom improvement, where we are, the elementary principals are aware of the concerns, and their data teams are looking at data, and the schools that have the ability, that have additional resources are trying to provide tutoring, are trying to provide interventions. However, you know, we have, with what resources we have, we do what we can. Right now, the interventionist that we hired last year, we are, we are focusing on reading because that is what our strategic plan, that is how it was outlined, and that is when we went, when we were going for Prop R, that is what we said those interventionists were going to be used for, and that is what our focus has been. So beyond that, you know, it takes time, and you can only, to successfully implement things, you have to be careful about how much you implement at one time. So this year, we are focusing on Lucy Hawkins, Reading and Writing Units of Study. To add on to that at elementary would be a monumental task at this point and overwhelming. So what they're doing is they're looking at data, we're doing the benchmark assessments, we're analyzing the data, and they're using that to drive instruction and make, make changes in instruction based on what they are seeing from the data they're collecting on their students. So they're developing goals based on that. Teachers have to write something called a student learning objective, that's part of their evaluation process now. And most elementary schools have decided that math, because of the concerns in math, that is their area of focus, and so they are focusing on mathematics and units of study in math and creating those objectives based on that.
And I'm good with, I'm good with everything that you said. But there's nothing that tells me real time, if I'm not in the school that has the resource, and I'm not with a teacher who mostly writes X, Y, and Z, what is my child going to get real time? So when they get to middle school, they're not So when they get to middle school, they're not behind. If we haven't implemented it yet in, in elementary, perhaps I'm missing something because you're, you're looking at me kind of oddly. But if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not-
I'm not sure I understand, I'm not sure I understand the question because they, we haven't reviewed math curriculum. I, I just, I explained that. We have not done that at this point. And we have not done professional development in the area of mathematics in elementary because we have focused on English language arts.
Correct, right. But we're noticing that we're, we're not performing at the level that we would, our, our scores are not where we would like for them to be? Is that accurate or no?
That is accurate. And that's why I said that's got to, that's got to be our next area of focus. However, we, it's hard to, you have to, if you want to do something well, you have to do things, if you want, if we want our teachers to be successful and to successfully implement, you, you have to do things, the core needs to be worked on. That is the answer. We know that. So to do that successfully, we know that that's going to have to wait until next year to do a complete revision and complete support because we're focusing on Lucy Cockin Reading and Writing Units of Study right now.
Got it. Well, I get what, I get what Lisa's saying, the, the kids are going to fall through the cracks this year.
What about now?
And I think they're falling through the cracks this year?
I, I mean, I, we, we do what we-
We have data, we're reviewing the data and the data is telling us that we have some areas to improve.
I think the problem is, and if we look back over, our scores right now reflect years of cuts that have happened.
Agreed, I can't disagree with that.
It also reflects years of, those that get the cuts come from our elementary. So a long, and I mean, just even the two years that I've sat on and watched this happen year after year, and you know, I, I'll become the bad guy for saying this, but I'm going to, we spend $2 million a year for block scheduling in our high schools. But we have kids that can't read or write and can't do math at elementary and we don't have the resources to help them. But we, we have, we're building a house from the top down. We've not built the foundation of the kids being able to have third grade reading, fifth grade math. And it just, it's one of those things that, much like you, I sit and I look at and I'm like, we need to shift resources. Resources have got to start moving because if these kids can't read at third grade, can't do math at fifth grade, how are you going to expect them to be successful in middle school and then moving on to our high schools? But that's where all of our resources have been.
And that's part of the bigger conversation. Take you out of the hot seat for a minute. That Kevin was alluding to with Marshall's review and the finance committee's review of what do we have and where are we putting our money and where are we putting our resources? If we have children who are falling in this gap of not being able to be prepared at a level that we would like for them to perform at, or the state would like for them to perform at, or that they just quite frankly, need to be able to perform at in order to be able to build and be ready for career or college or whatever path they take in life, if we are falling short on that, then we need to identify that level of resource. And so we're talking about our children who are sitting in a classroom traditionally kind of meeting the marks, maybe barely meeting the marks, but meeting the marks. And then we have children who have high need, who are also in our public system, who need that added resource. And if they're falling through the cracks here, then they're going to fall through the cracks, even if we've had the PD development for math in middle school, which would be great and we can start seeing that kind of roll out. If I, if I'm receiving children into that level of education that are behind, then what's my plan? Is just the new PD training that those teachers have had, is, is that going to be enough? And so this isn't about teachers. This is about providing them the right resources, which we're doing with PD. But we're also, do they need different resources or more resources in order to be able to reach those children who might be coming in behind?
You're talking about intervention as opposed to systemic change?
Well, yeah.
I think we're working on systemic change, but what are we doing?
Temporarily intervention.
Yeah, well, how are we bridging this? Because I think you've presented multiple times systemic change and we're, we're getting there and I appreciate that the elementary schools have identified this as a, as a concern. And it sounds like y'all are shifting kind of, you know, real time there, but yeah, what are, what are we doing?
There's, there's a couple of things I look at too.
Am I missing something?
I know for the, over the last few years, the money that I know the foundation was able to contribute for tutoring-
Yes.
-has really been abbreviated. So tutoring is an issue. There's another thing though with, I wonder with, with the A-plus resources, if we, if there is a way that we can target them, because I know, I can only speak for, for my kid, five kids that came through here, they were all A-plus and they all did a fairly decent job with math and they did a lot of, that was, that was what they chose to do. And I wonder if there's, if that's a resource that we might have available, it's, it's a consideration. It's, it's not a cost issue, but it's certainly a service issue. And I think it would be a, a great use of, of some high school skill.
And A-plus, they, they do work in the schools with the students.
Okay.
Yeah. And do tutoring work like that. However, remember, they are, they're, they're limited a little bit on their knowledge too and their ability to teach. But yes, we have used that as a resource. Districts that, I will tell you, districts that are performing higher do have more resources. They have interventions.
Or have had more resources in the past.
They have math and they have reading interventionists.
And we saw that with the neighborhood developers.
And they're completely separate too.
We understand that.
Yes.
Tina, you mentioned tutoring.
Yes.
Does that help, that helps the students? Should we be doing more? I mean, does it help the students or it doesn't?
I-
Can we, because I'm with Lisa, I'm with Lisa, I, I think we need real-time intervention now.
But the thing with tutoring is, if you rely on tutoring, then you're not going to enhance the daily classroom instruction.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. Teachers might need more support period.
That's the base piece.
Yeah.
Do they conflict though? I mean, I understand the, the point about the professional development, it takes time and, and all that. But does the tutoring conflict with the-
It can.
It can.
Right? Because I rely on the tutoring.
We don't have to though.
You don't have to rely on the tutoring.
I mean, we can make a specific plan to continue what you guys are doing with going after the root cause of the issue, but yet put a, a Band-Aid on our pressure on this thing to stop the bleeding.
Right. Because if A-plus tutoring is somewhat effective, like Larry suggested, and those are high school students, seems to me that if we can get adults to tutor some of these students, because this has been going on for a few years, this isn't, based on what you showed, this has been at least a three-year trend, right? Or am I-
Yes, but once again, I, I want to caution, this is one test, one day in one piece of time. This is one piece of data. And the test has changed every year for the last three years and we've had different standards every year for the last three years. We haven't even had an, we have new standards we're supposed to be aligning curriculum to. We haven't even had time to align our curriculum to. And we're going to have a new test again next year.
It's impossible to make comparison when you can't compare every year.
How are neighboring districts doing though? I mean, if we're, we're, our problem is, is we can't go from A, year one to year two and compare data. But could we compare data to, I don't want to say Limerick, but all our neighboring districts? I see we do it by the statewide. Could we do it more locally and look at how we do on our tests compared to our neighboring different districts and then go see how they're doing?
I can tell you how they're doing it. They have interventionists.
Better, right.
So they are doing better.
They have additional supports, they are doing better. They have, they have specific-
They have resources.
They have directors of mathematics, they have coaches in math.
So what resources-
They have interventionists.
I guess what we're trying to get at is what resources do you need now that can start addressing the problem today? Right? That's what we're, what do we need now?
They would need interventionist right now if you're going to do it.
Okay.
That takes resources.
And this summer, there was no recommendation to hire math interventionists before the school year started.
Well, and I think that was because we hired reading, we focused on one over the other.
What Larry had said.
The point of emphasis on ELA.
What's it going to take?
Like the reading interventionist.
Well, we just hired 16 reading and ELLs and it was $1.1 million.
But in all fairness, that was a direction that we set as a board. When we looked at Prop R and we did the allocation, where the money went, we said our emphasis was on ELA because third grade was our metric and third grade happens before fifth grade, right or wrong? That was the direction we set. Now, what we're saying now is maybe we need to rethink and accelerate what we want to do at math at the same way. Jamie's question is, is there a way that we can disaggregate this and understand, are there things we can do in terms of basic concepts that would help them? Is it a concepts issue? Is it an abstraction issue? Was it a technology issue? And, and I, and from talking with you, I'm not sure the data can be disaggregated to give you those qualities.
There is one piece of data I want to throw out and Dr. Gaines told me this may not be entirely accurate because it's the same as post-satchel.
Then don't say it.
But, well, I think it, I think it should be said, quite frankly. I went through and I looked at the database they had, which if it is a little bit off that, you know, maybe what I need to do is actually go through the DUCI stuff, although they apparently will not rank everybody in the state, but just do the 20 districts around us and pull it out as painstaking as that is.
It's not that difficult.
I've done it before. But the, what it came out to with them was we ranked in math 253 out of 558. So that puts us in the top 55%. So we're about halfway down the state rankings, if you will.
Would you say 253 out of 558?
Yeah.
That includes 46.8 proficient advanced.
Proficient advanced percentage. But I don't think, quite frankly, any of us are happy with that. 80% of plus is where I'd want to be.
No, I don't think so.
So I think that's, well, it's another piece of data to look at. And that's that comparison thing that you're talking about. We can't go year to year because of all the changes. That's fine. We can look at how everybody else did and if other people around us are beating us, what are they doing? They're a benchmark. And even within our own district, we can look at our own schools and see how we're doing. And actually, I'm sure you already know this, but in math at the middle school level, we're doing bad in all of them. There's actually not one that's doing great.
And that's a state trend. That, that's not just, I want you, middle school math has dropped since smarter balance was implemented statewide.
Okay.
Even very high performing districts saw a, a huge decline in their mathematics force.
Okay. I did notice the top one in the state actually was not like 90 something high percent. It was lower, which was interesting. So that's where that ranking, I think, is more important than maybe a straight number.
So really the real-time piece for us, because the, the data that has just become public in the last few weeks, is data from six to seven months ago. So it is very much autopsical data. It's the benchmark data that we just did a round of collection on, is the live, real-time data that we can take that's actionable. That's what you use because now you have information about each student and where they are and the way this, the way the system works, it's not only about each student, but within a class of students or within a grade level of students, is there a particular concept that our students aren't grasping? Now, if I was a betting person, because I was a math person, so I've looked at lots of math data over the years, I would bear to guess that fractions are an issue. Fractions are typically an issue. And this is not to say anything poorly about elementary teachers, but what I've experienced over and over again is you put a math curriculum group together and you go, okay, we're weak in fractions. And the high school teachers say, yep, our kids don't know fractions when they get to us. And our middle school teachers said, yeah, our kids aren't really strong in fractions when they get to us. And our elementary teachers typically will say, what I've heard over and over again is, we're not really comfortable teaching fractions. Now, I'm not saying that that's what our case is, but I, that's a common theme that I've heard over and over again across a number of schools. So for, so for me, as we look to go forward, it's what is the benchmark data and the strategies that we're using through the CCI piece help us move forward tomorrow with those pieces? Because we begin to have individual, we know more about how a student is doing as we move forward. And technology is becoming a little bit more powerful to where technology can be that Or math games that can help in that regard.
I didn't quite follow when you said tutoring could be a hindrance where you rely on tutoring. I mean, we had an elementary principal call up and said fifth grade teacher, fifth grade students are tutoring, what, first and kindergarten? So I, I, I didn't follow your reasoning.
So it's a, it's a systems issue, right? So if your system relies on tutoring, it won't strengthen the base system.
But I don't, okay, I, I guess I just don't, in other words, you talk about like after school tutoring.
You don't get to the root cause. If there needs to be more resources in the classroom for the teachers and the students and you don't, you don't build that infrastructure, instead you rely on tutoring, then you might be missing a very important part of the-
Right. We're building the infrastructure with the professional development with all the-
Well, so that's where I go back to. So I want to, I want to just be clear that my query here has nothing to do with the abilities of the teachers in the classroom that we have going on. My query is about where do we need to be thinking about where our resources go in our next step, right? So the PD is great and, and we've identified that we have, you know, the changes in the curriculum, if we can even follow the tracking of, of all of the mandates, unfunded mandates that are required upon public education. And this system sounds fab because we can identify where we might have trending and we can maybe fix that real time. But if the teachers are doing everything they can with the resources they have and the PD that they've had, and we're still falling short, have we overlooked the need for more resources, which you've identified and you've just briefly talked about it, director of, et cetera, that I don't want to miss that point? We can do all the professional development we can, you know, possible, but we still might not be able to serve the needs of the students in the classroom if we don't have the right amount of resources. So I want to make sure that we're trying to identify, what are we missing?
Yes.
And how do we fix that? As a board and as a cabinet and as a community, what's that resource?
Well, I think one of the things that we look at is, we were spending $100,000 on PD up to this point until Prop R passed. So they were, from just conversations that we've had, our staff has been starved for professional development because it's just been a resource that we haven't had, which is why I think it became such an important issue for Prop R. Now we have it and I underst, I completely get with what we're doing. So I think it's, it's one of those, now we finally have it in place, but it still doesn't help that we have-
Our ratios still might be off.
Right.
We might still have 20-plus kids in a classroom doing fractions that, doing sixth grade math with my oldest son, sometimes like, I have to stop and think about this. Hold on. Because, you know, some of the, the concepts are challenging or more challenging, or they struggle, certain students struggle more. So how are we meeting those individual needs that we might be able to identify real time?
But I, and I, and I'm in complete agreement with you Lisa, but here's the deal. It's just like if you were in school from this year to this year and the year you, the year after you left, they got technology, they put in computers. Okay, so you didn't get the benefit from any of that. And that's what we're seeing now. We're seeing the kids that may be struggling because they didn't have the benefit of the PD in their, in their teachers and things that we now are capable of having.
But that, but we're talking about meeting the minimum standards.
I get that, I totally get that. But what about me that didn't get to know how to use a computer because it came in the year after I left? You know, there's a start and a stop to everything, even the sale at Macy's. It's got a start day and an end day, okay? So we all want to be there at the start day, but it doesn't always work that way. Sometimes we come in on the end. So I totally get, I under, totally understand.
That was your first question, what's your second question?
And I just hope that, you know, we can get on, get on with it as quickly as possible. That's all we can hope for. Let's just get on with it.
Well, I, I think what this points out is, I think when we look at this 16, 17 budget, we have to think in terms of math intervention was just like we thought.
17, 18, you mean?
16, 17 is about over.
No, 16, 17 is it.
That's this year.
16, 17, 17, 18. I don't care.
Next year, right?
Next budget, I think we have to make the same consideration we did with the other one.
I agree.
And I think that's the hardest part.
I think that's part of our discussion of finances and priority.[1719.45]
Right. Good point.
And I think that's what we look at is, you know, for us, we have a whole year, and every year that we wait to do something else is another year that these kids get behind. And we, we continue to keep doing that, because we've had such a lack of resources. You know, for me, school of innovation is one of those things, that if we don't launch this next year, we've now lost yet another year of something that would have greatly helped elementary. And we just seem to push it off and push it off, because we'll do it next year. We'll do it next year.
Well, we have a history of kicking the can down the road in this school district. We always have, you know, and I think it's just time to put an end to that and act on the things that need action on as quickly as we can.
But we didn't get into the situation one year.
No, 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 absolutely not.
It's going to take us two, it takes us time and.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree with that.
Process to do it.
Correct. Systemic change takes time.
If you want, if you want to make it a permanent continuous change.
Yes. That's my only question, is how are we going to try to bridge it? Can, are there ways for us to be able to bridge it? We know, if we know there's an issue, systemic change is going to take us for a while to do.
Just a year.
But if there are some spots where we can have an opportunity to minimize lost learning, I don't understand why we wouldn't entertain that.
Right. If we're going to say that forty-five as a high in our middle schools for math is unacceptable, and that needs to be in the sixties, and what are we going to do between now and next year that that's in the sixties and not forty-five?
Well, there's nothing we can do between now and next year, because there's not going to be another test until that date next year.
April.
But it's the steps that we take now that make an impact on that score next year.
Would interventionist mid-year help bridge that gap? We brought in over a million dollars, they won't be budgeted.
Summer school?
Summer school. And I guess.
Would that, would that be in something that we would entertain? Interventionist in the middle of the year?
After Christmas?
No?
And the reason I say no is because we are a unique industry in terms of when people come in and out and when people move. We have a window through which we have prime hiring and opportunities to grab people. Because we are an industry where people don't move from one employer to another in February. People move from one employer to another in August. That's when that happens. So the hiring window for August is, we're really early in that. So if you make a decision to hire people for August, we're able to probably capture a higher quality of person the earlier you are. This may be a bad thing to say, but if I look at the pool out there that I could hire today, most of them are people who couldn't get jobs last year.
That's true.
What about like December graduates, people who are graduating college in December? There may not be that many of them, because you might have.
You don't want to look for.
You're only looking for maybe a couple of positions.
How many do you think you would take?
A couple of positions.
Yeah.
Wouldn't, I mean, if you want, my honest opinion, if you're saying you want instant change, you need at least as many as we have in reading, which is eleven. You would need, I mean.
I think that's important information for us to understand. It's not a resource.
I mean, two people, two people is not, is not going to, to.
That won't make a difference.
That's not going to make a difference.
We would need very, very minimum one at each elementary school.
Absolutely.
We have ten, so, and then that one person is not going to, I mean, we're going to give them a few months to do anything.
I want to remind you that our reading interventionists only work with kindergarten through second grade, because there's one of them at each school, and that's all they have the ability to work with. Except Bearbaum has two, because they're so much larger. So, but they still are only able to work with kindergarten through second grade. And in some of our elementaries, they're even having a difficult time getting to even all the second grade classrooms.
And how many does each reading specialist, I guess, meet with? Is it twenty-five, thirty? How many does he?
Oh, no, the interventionist. They, they push into a class and they're doing, they're doing strategy groups right alongside the classroom teacher. So they do small group instruction right alongside the classroom teacher.
So it's not like they're specially helping the twenty-five or thirty? They're helping all K through two?
Yes.
Okay.
They push into the teacher's classroom, and they are another classroom teacher in there, and the students rotate to them just as they do to their, their classroom teacher. And that is something else that a lot of our elementaries have started to actually do guided math instruction, because they are aware of the needs, so they're trying to do small group math instruction, like we do with reading, to focus on individual student needs. So that is something else that they have been implementing.
So we're basic, we're, we're just reaping what we created by not stepping up to the plate five years ago.
Yes.
But I think it's also, we didn't have the resources, and that wasn't an intentional.
Of course not.
Oh, yeah, it was a lack of, it was a lack of resources.
If we walk away from this without knowing what resources we need going forward.
Right.
And putting that into a budget for next year.
I think we've got, I got that ball in.
I think you need to consider it as not a lack of resources, but a lack of investment.
Exactly.
Yeah.
As a system, the district chose not to invest in people and chose not to invest in.
Academics.
Academics.
Could state it, sorry, stated on the, on the documents that we read. But we became character schools. Now, we get to see what, and that's what happened as a result of that.
My, I mean, my concern is, we've got a, a plan, you know, to move forward. We've got some benchmarks piece in our online dashboard. We've got the new benchmark piece to see where our kids are. And we need to stick with that plan and not have a knee-jerk reaction to a blip in data. Now, if the data trend continues in, after we've been able to implement some of these things, then we need to take a look at the plan. I think it's important to stick with the plan.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question? What do we spend, and this is a dumb question, it might be a Marshall question, what do we spend in character education?
Marshall?
I'm going to guess maybe sixty thousand.
Okay, so it's not.
In our, in our booth, or forty thousand, and I think the character education is sixty thousand.
Okay.
But it's.
I appreciate the character education, I do.
Absolutely.
But I can see the character of our kids as they come up and they talk to us and the things that they do.
That's two teachers, and that's not sufficient.
I see what we could do with, you know.
It's not a, the character piece is not only a cost, it's a time.
Right.
Right? So it's not just what your investment is. But I wouldn't want to divest, but I don't think that needs to be our focus.
I think academics should be our focus.
I do too, but I don't think that's necessarily where it's been.
So when you're looking at going forward, and I'm, I'm on board with that, you're looking at the process, and I think it comes down to what Lisa said before, we talked about this. When everything is bad across the board, there's no way to look at that and say that's a teacher issue. That is a process issue.
It's a system, yeah, it's a system issue.
So it's, and I do appreciate all the stuff going on for that. I guess my, my next question, I would really love to do something interventionist immediately to bump that up, but what are the goals for next year that we can measure, which I think has got to be comparisons to other districts where we're at on that percentage, compared, where are we at now? And maybe get those numbers specifically with the group that we want to target ourselves as being within our peer group. And where are we going to get to next year so that we have metrics we're shooting for? And let's make them stretch goals. And if we aren't getting there, that we're going to take extra steps. So we've got things in place we're going to do. I want to make sure that this is in front of us every month, every couple of months, whatever it is, so that we are not losing sight of this until next year.
So our community dashboard piece, we have a math goal.
That's pretty nice.
So, yeah, it's right there for the world, let's see.
What is our math goal?
It's in the increased kids completing Algebra One by the end of eighth grade.
If they get to Algebra One, that's all I'm going to say.
Right, because we're at the math.
Because if.
Because part of what we learned when we were, when Dr. Lewis here, we were comparing with other districts, is Lindbergh's focus of course, reading up to grade level three. Then for four and five, Lindbergh switches over to math, and they really intensely focus, that's what I.
Actually, Lindbergh does math too, and they do math all the way through as well. So they have their.
Oh, all the way through, yeah. But what I mean is, I think that was kind of the, I don't know if that was specifically in our strategic plan about math fourth and fifth grade, but I remember discussions about reading third grade level and math afterwards.
Math fifth grade is in our strategic plan as a metric.
That is, yeah, that's why. It's been a while since I've looked at it.
And I think Lindbergh has thirty-six coaches compared to, and they're.
I don't know what they have this year.
Just under, I mean.
Right, they have a lot more coaches than their smaller districts.
Yeah, they're almost half our size, and we have sixteen.
Oh, no, they're not.
And we have eleven coaches.
They're about seven thousand now.
Are they at seven?
They're about half our size.
And we only have eleven coaches.
And they're going to be.
Those are in other positions, traditional English language.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't sixteen, yeah. They, they do a, kind of like our dashboard, a real-time assessment in, in multiple areas and change on the fly. And that's where a lot of their coaches come in to play, so. It's a different system.
And it's worked for them? They're one of the best districts in the state.
Yeah, I don't doubt that it's going to work. My concern, and I rarely try to be self-centered, but I have children in the system that are at risk of not necessarily being able to be at a level where we would like for them to be if the system isn't able to deliver.
The Lindberghs of the world, that's nice and good. I'm more interested in finding, in looking at the schools that are outperforming their demographics, because they're doing something real.
Yeah.
Those are the schools that are doing something real. If they're outperforming their demographics, and they've got systems in place that are moving kids.
That's true.
That, to me, those are the schools that you look at.
And what are those schools? What, what is another school that's very similar to us? I mean, it's probably not around here.
The three schools in the state that are most like us across about seven metrics are Fox, Jefferson City, and Park Hill in Kansas City.
Okay.
And of those, Park Hill is top performer.
Okay. So they're a good one, too.
And we've started to implement some of the things they're doing. Continuous classroom improvement, for example, is something they do. That is, we did research, we went there, we visited, we did site visits in their district that we sent, our, our schools have started continuous classroom improvement this year. They did a site visit to Park Hill last year. So we, we are looking at things they are doing and implementing things they are doing.
I might point out that Park Hill is a state Baldridge award winner, a Q, quality award winner. I think they were the first, first public school in the state.
Yeah, they won it twice.
I didn't know they got the, the second one.
Yeah, we got it.
Didn't know that.
Well, I think we know what we got to do.
Yeah, I feel like we're losing a little bit of steam on this. There's a lot to this. I'd like to suggest that if we are going to kind of move on from this, that we put something on the calendar to bring it back, maybe after we put a little bit of time to think about it, do some research, talk with people about it, so that we don't lose sight of this and don't have any action plans coming out of this. Whether that be in December, that we put something on the agenda, or whatever it is, but I don't think, I don't want to lose sight of this.
Budget next, I think that's when this needs to surface.
I think it's got to be before that. I think it's got to be.
Every time we talk budget, I think we talk.
Don't we do some kind of tests ahead of time to get students prepared? And then also it gives us an idea of how they're performing, so we can adjust our teaching.
That's the benchmark stuff that we're, we're talking about.
Right. And so could we get information back on that in the next?
I'm more, I'm more apt to report out benchmark data than anything else.
Okay.
Right? To me, the bit, and, so the first benchmark is just, this is where we are. The second benchmark is how we moved during that time, right? So it's the second benchmark, and then are we doing?
We're doing three in the spring, yeah.
The third benchmark, so what, what's our growth?
What's her?
Can we get answers to that?
The timeline is, the first one is like early in the school year, right?
No, no, it's after, the benchmarks are based on what we've taught in a time of six weeks of instruction. We just finished our, we are just wrapping up our first round.
Okay.
Not six weeks, twelve weeks of instruction. We just wrapped up our first round of benchmarks. We will not have another benchmark assessment until February. So that would be our next, that would be our data point that would be good to look at, is the next benchmark to compare data on where our students are achieving. But it's based on the standards, the benchmarks were aligned to the standards.
And you'll be sure and let us know in February when we have those results.
Well, we'll have results earlier, right? The first benchmark, you'll have something, I don't know, is that me?
First benchmark just tells you where you are. It tells you where your starting point is.
Okay. Even twelve weeks into the school year, your starting point?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it tells you where your starting point is for, in terms of the measure.
Yeah, we won't see, we won't be able to compare to any.
We don't know, yeah.
Oh, compare anything, okay.
And Kevin, just, we, we do have things in our district strategic plan aligned to mathematics with action stuff still aligned to mathematics. So we do have action stuff outlined in the strategic plan with math. They have measures tied to it. And part of that is actually tied to the benchmark assessments. The end of, the, the fifth grade benchmark is the end of course exam, which is the fifth grade benchmark assessments.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Plummer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you in February, or March.
Or December.
March, yeah.
Move on to high school innovation.
Look at the data.
It's all about being agile, you know?
Yeah. Be agile.
So this evening, we have a group that we are coming together to present a little update on what we're doing in our high school level. As we outline a plan for moving our district forward centered around that student engagement, that innovation and continuous improvement.
I'm sorry to interrupt, could you email us that document? Because there's nothing posted on e-boards.
Sure.
Because we, we don't have anything to look at, I guess, I guess we'll.
Well, we can move the screen for now.
Yeah. Just whenever you get, whenever you get around, maybe after this.
After this.
That sounds good.
Are you sure?
Before would have been good, before would have been good too, but, yeah.
Okay. As I was saying, as we're outlining a plan for those three areas of continuous improvement, student engagement, and innovation, we launched a small team that has gotten together to sort of reimagine what are high schools, what we can do, especially in regards to offerings for our high school students. This evening, I have three team members with me that are going to present some of our progress that we've made on those areas. Mr. Wally from our alt program, we have Dr. Swanger from Principal at Melville High School, and Ms. Kellman, Principal at Oakville High School. So we've sort of put a charge together to reimagine some of these opportunities in, When we do that, when we're doing that, and you probably can't see these very well, so I can talk about it. We have four different things that we sort of want to make sure that while we're creating these opportunities for kids, we are coming back to a core. What, what are we doing this for? Not just because it sounds good, but these are four like questions that we kept coming back to. One, just to make sure that we're serving our, our kids, the needs of our kids, and providing them with these multiple pathways, creating environments where they are related to their passions, what they're interested in, and what they're excited about. And then something that make, we're making sure students could advance at their own pace, whether that pace is slower or faster. In the way, sort of look at that, Dr. Dean sort of had a good analogy the other day, but it's like riding in a car or riding on a train. Riding on a, on a train, you're going straight ahead, but you can't stop. On a car, if you see something and you have that interest or passion in that, you could turn off and stop and learn more about it. And we really want kids to take ownership, ownership of their learning. These are some of the opportunities, you saw this slide a few months ago, a month and a half ago, when we came to you and said, these are the things that we wanted to expand our opportunities for seventeen, eighteen school year. We've made progress in those. The things on the left, early college, as well as schools within a school and academy, are things we're going to talk about this evening, that we are planned to actually start rolling out as soon as January now, instead of waiting until seventeen, eighteen school year. So we'll talk about that.
Very good.
Some of those updates that you're aware of, so we, we've sort of developed a communication plan of our team and how we're communicating with students and parents about how we're communicating with them about the options that are out there. We also brought a policy adoption that you approved at our last board meeting, that was regarding, regarding our early credit options and awarding credit to students for independent study and mastery of content as well. That early college dual enrollment and schools within a school are what we're gonna sort of briefly talk about tonight and show that to you and answer any questions that you have about that. So early college dual enrollment, let's see here, start with Ms. Kellman.
So early college and dual enrollment is something that we've had for many years at Oakville. And if you'll see, those are the major universities that we have agreements with where the students actually take those courses. And the teachers in our own high school are the instructors for those courses. And of course, they don't have to take the college credit. There is a, there's a fee and they have to apply for it. But basically, the teachers are using the curriculum that the colleges have given to them along with the texts and this type of thing. So those are being taught in our building currently. What we're gonna try this coming semester in the spring is a, an agreement with St. Louis Community College. And so that is an expanded opportunity that we have not had. And they are looking at not only potentially having our own teachers teach some of those courses that they offer there for college credit, but they're also looking at actually offering a class at the South County Center for our students. So, click the slide. Okay, so this is a piece of what we gave our students earlier this fall so that they can understand what it is that we're gonna offer. So at St. Louis Community College, they agreed that, all right, we, they agreed to 15 kids potentially would start a class, we could have more. And I think really if, if we really pushed it, they could potentially even have a class of less than 15. But right now, it's that number is 15. And so we had to figure out, well, what are we gonna start with? Because there's, they have a whole lot of classes at the, at St. Louis Community. So we elected to look at these classes. And the reason why it's set up this way is that if they wanted to take a college composition course, it's a three credit hours, but they have to have both of those. That's why those are listed up there. So if a kid wanted to take that away from school, because we do, I think Melville offers it, but we don't for college credit now. But if they would wanna take that away, they have that opportunity now. And it's very cheap. It's $25 a credit hour. So it'd be $75 for three hours of credit. And the reason why we started with these courses is because we know that these courses transfer to almost most of the major universities that both Melville and Oakville kids go to. The general psych, the introduction to sociology and public speaking, those will all be offered for college credit. And the top two, the general psych and the introduction to sociology, they're also gonna offer those online. And there's some talk that that might be cheaper than the $106 a credit hour if you take it at their building. The 25 is if it would be offered in our building taught by our teachers. The other thing that we're exploring, and this just happened today, and I don't know that much about it, but Steve King is our career guidance counselor and also our department chair, and he's got a very good relationship with St. Louis Community as well as Beth Neighbors from Melville. But he visited with them today. And they are even more excited about potentially exploring the career technical side of St. Louis Community. And they kind of outlined it a little bit like this, and like I said, this is very preliminary, and I really didn't get a chance to talk with Steve. He was there most of the day. And just talking about all kinds of ideas, even potentially even incorporating our CAPS program with them, and that's something that we would have to explore with them as well as with the folks that deal with the CAPS program. But they said that they would, they envision it like this, where the student takes, part of the courses are almost all of the courses in their senior year. And then their second year, when they graduate, they take the second year of that career course, whatever that is, so that by their third year, they're employable. And they've been working with hospitals right now because there is, it's almost like the medical recording, they, they don't have a whole lot, they're, they're not available. And so this is something that is a high demand job, and we don't know right now what the, what their salary would be. But I think that's a tremendous opportunity, not just with the medical piece, but with maybe other career choices that kids might have that maybe don't require that four-year degree that we can now start offering our students. So these are, those are all the things that we're exploring that would be new for next year, as well as, this piece right here is very small, but it was, is a way of starting. And so we have put it out to parents of kids who are seniors. We've, they've talked to all the seniors, and now it's just a matter of the kids deciding if they want to opt to take these courses outside of school. They've also rearranged their time so that, you know, the kids can get out and spend the rest of the day out. So I think it's, I think it's doable for, especially for second semester, and I'm kind of excited about the opportunities and the relationship we can have with St. Louis Community going into next year and beyond. So that's that.
Love it.
Cool.
So the schools within a school model is something that's near and dear to my heart, mainly for the opportunities and options it provides all of our students. Next year, we are gonna move forward with moving Whittle, moving the Alt Academy into Oakville High School and Melville High School. That's, that's the best analogy when speaking about schools within a school. We're gonna lift Whittle up and we're gonna drop it into Oakville High School and Melville High School. We anticipate that being an option for all students. So as we have the Alt Academy now, I always foresee there'll be students who take the majority of their classes online because it works for them. But what it's gonna allow us to do is expand out to all the kids in that building. Right now, there's about five states in our country that require an online class for graduation, three that recommend it. As we move and expand our options to our other students, we have that structure built into place in the long run if our state decides to make that a requirement for our graduation. The next opportunity that we're looking at is the Panther and Tiger Academy. This academy is modeled after, well, some of the things we've seen around the country, particularly Taylor County, Kentucky. We have some really smart people on our committee, but we're also smart enough that we're not gonna borrow a really good idea and mold it to, to meet our community and our kids. So that's kind of how our Panther Academy and Tiger Academy have evolved. What we're envisioning is a model and an opportunity, a path for seniors. So qualifying seniors who on one side can have choices. Students who are enrolled in multiple AP or dual credit classes will be able to take independent study classes, develop a path of study with an academy teacher based on their choice, based on their interest level, based on their strengths. And they'll develop a project management plan on how they are gonna meet those standards through that learning experience. There'll be scheduled check-ins for those teachers. So these students will not be required to be on campus. They're gonna be out having learning experiences. They may be doing internships. They may be doing some relevant research with university professors, something that is geared towards their interests. It may be connected to their AP and dual credit classes. It may be a service project for the community. But that path is gonna be developed with collaboration of an academy teacher at the building and have check-ins so they can have a unique experience for them. The other path we're looking to offer seniors is students who are here on a daily basis. We wanna offer them a strength, an interest-based approach for them. So with that teacher, they'd be attending daily. It may be individual projects that they're working on based on, again, interest and strengths. It may be group class projects where it is a focus of a topic through multiple lenses. The example we gave the group the other day is that group focus may be looking at the history of St. Louis through a science lens, through an English lens, through a social studies lens, obviously, through mathematical demographics. So looking at all of those aspects of history through all of those different kinds of content and lenses. Also envision things as simple as doing chemistry in the kitchen and doing science experiments that way, just to go through the process. Again, it's about learning experience and personalized experiences for those students.
Okay, so what are our next steps? As you've heard, we've been working as a unified group here, and we're really excited about the opportunity that's gonna give some of our kids that choose that pathway. So one of the first things we're gonna have to do is define our enrollment process, meaning how do we select kids and how do they select us? So we have to start doing a lot of talking, and we started out, we just had a meeting with some teachers, and we had over 20 teachers show up after hours. So we know the excitement's there. We haven't even begun to talk to our kids and our parents. We know that many of those guys would be excited about this too. So we're gonna develop a student application. We brainstormed some ideas, but these aren't anything in, you know, this is just some ideas that we have down right now, but recommendation from an administrator, a teacher, a counselor to make sure that this is even fit for this student, because this is the pathway that they're choosing. Is it gonna be a mistake or is it really gonna be a bonus for those kids? So something along, you know, with the student essay, why they wanna be in there, and what's their proposed topic? And the really cool thing about this is, the sky's the limit. So we don't even know what those topics are. The kids are gonna bring those to us and see what unique opportunities in the St. Louis area has to offer for these, these students. So they will design this course of study by themselves, but really with a lot of help. So our teachers are gonna become facilitators and really help our kids prosper in this system. Then we're gonna have to define our teacher roles, and what is that gonna look like? And it's gonna be based on student interest. So we can't answer a lot of questions right now. This, this academy is gonna be as big as the academy needs to be, you know? And again, based on student interest. So it's gonna have to be departmental approved, we're gonna have to work within DESI's measures, we know that. We're gonna develop personalized in-class plans. So again, really based around the student's interest, that a lot of that might be embedded credits, it might be different ways of looking at something that we haven't always done in our traditional eight semester high school that we've offered for our students. Virtual course is going to be big. So we're really gonna have, as John had said, the virtual element is going to play a very big, very big part in these kids. And then organize, really presentations are, what is gonna be the culmination of this students? You know, what does this project-based learning look like at the end? And what do the kids hope to get out of it? And how do we present that to higher education so that these students do have a direct pathway on? So that's really what we've got right now. We're just starting to scratch the surface. We're really excited about it, but we really do know and do intend to put this in place next year, because we've got kids that want it. We have kids that thrive in this type of environment. And it won't be all of our student body, but the ones that it will, it meets the need, just what you were saying before. It's individualized education for all, you know, within our, this big box. So we're really excited about it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
I just wish I was back in high school again.
Don't we all?
My initial question is, Dominic, what do you think of this?
That was yesterday for you.
And I apologize. I kinda just, that last conversation just kinda went crazy, and I apologize.
I know, it's in the sense of, okay.
You jump right in. Yeah, you do.
Well, I wanted to say first off that, I know I can speak for a lot of my peers, that they would absolutely love the idea of the Panther Tiger Academy. Because there's so many of us, especially the senior classes here, many of them want to go in the medical field. And that's such a long path that they'll have to go through. And if we could start out now, like if I could explore different areas within the medical field or different things that I might wanna study as my major in college that I could get ahead of the game now, therefore shortening my time that I have to be in school later on, and now I can get into the field helping people quicker, it would absolutely be amazing. And I know that if we did, like the two paths, so the one path going outside, doing internships, that could help me with the real-world stuff. But then if we also needed to stay here, for whatever reason, like a biology teacher could help me be more prepared for a biology major or that kind of coursework down the road. So I, I absolutely love the idea, and I wish I could do that right now.
We can hold you back for a year if you want to.
You seem to be having some real-time issues tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
I have a couple things as usual, but I promise.
Another list of demands?
No. I feel like, I apologize, but I was. I have to say, John, chemistry in, in my kitchen makes me a little leery, being the mom of, you know, thinking about having virtual chemistry in the kitchen is a problem.
Can we just use the kitchens at the district?
Yeah, right. Good opportunity, but serious red flags. Again, I, I think that, I liked all of these ideas, and I, I know that they're, they're more developed than when they were certainly identified at our meeting a couple of months ago. And I have to say, at that time, I think we were, while I just speak for myself, surprised at, wow, we have so much going on. I had no idea, right? I think that, I applaud the opportunity for the diverse learning, diverse pedagogies. I think it really does speak to children and students at all levels of abilities and interests and passions and environments, and environmental need too, for that matter. I do think that, that these are really great options for our students and also options for those that are looking at our district and into our district of, is this a district for me or not? And I think we're continuing to look at how we need to prepare for high school, but also that those real-world experiences. Some of my students do the medical recording as a job, but also because they need that experience, similar to what you were just identifying, in order to get to the next level, you need that work experience or internship, et cetera. So those are really great opportunities. I would also just like to talk about the opportunity to be pushing some of, some of this, not all of it, but down into the middle, middle schools and certainly the virtual academy. There's lots of opportunity there to be able to speak again to individual student needs, learning styles, et cetera. And so it seems like, you know, obviously we have to start. I get it, I know, we have to start somewhere, and eventually it all comes together. But, you know, we might have some opportunities here to also look at those students who are stretching or the students who just have unique needs. So, great work.
And Lisa, a lot of that, we're charging our high schools to do what you're saying, and we're starting with seniors for a reason.
Sure, right. You have to start somewhere.
Right. And so that we can, we can make it the best experience. I will tell you that we are aware, there are students currently that are doing this, but they're doing this because we were random.
We pulled them aside, yeah.
They just happened to mention something to us.
Perfect storm.
And we're flexible and coming up with an individualized plan for them to be in the OR room or what, whatever that is.
Right.
And our hope now is to expand this so that we're creating these opportunities for all kids, whether you're going into, you know, whatever profession, whether it's dental.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the opportunities that have occurred at both high schools, I mean, there's all kinds of things that are going on at both high schools, but it's more of a reactionary thing. It's, it's, okay, this student has this issue, and how can we make this work?
Right.
And, and working with John and, and the things that we can get through there, working with virtual, so there's all kinds of different things that are happening for students at both high schools. It's just that it's not a broad spectrum right now. And I think too, the other thing is, you know, we wanna start with seniors. This is a paradigm shift. It's a paradigm shift for students, and it's a paradigm shift for our teachers. So if we start with just the seniors, I'm hoping if you start small and make this successful, then we can grow it. And maybe even change it even differently than what we're looking at with just the independent study piece. I mean, it would be, I don't know. Go ahead. We've had all kinds of conversations with staff. We met with them, and they've been stopping in all day today.
That's wonderful.
I've got this idea, and I've got this idea.
And I'm sure we'll continue to mark.
You send that to the microphone for the online, John, this is kind of turning around.
I think, you know, we have teachers that have a lot of ideas, but there's this idea here, and there's this idea here. So how can we make that look more organized?
Right.
And, and so that it can be given to all, all kids for, for an opportunity. And it's not gonna be for every kid, but I think we have a lot of need out there for kids that it will, it will service.
What's your connection into the business community to the, like the Dan Pogues down at Midwest and the Forrest Miller?
And I, I think that's.
Are the, are the leme in the, in the South County chambers?
Right.
Open, open to being part of this?
I think that's something that we as, as administrators, as well as the teachers who provide the, who get into these roles, that's something I think that it's gonna have to be part of that. Which is also the reason why I think St. Louis Community College is a huge resource for us, because they are already working out for those. And, and they are opening their arms to us.
You might even find an old-time computer scientist that might help.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if you guys have any seniors that are looking to go into logistics, let me know. We hire hundreds of seasonals every summer, and we're taking it down to seniors in high school now at our company. And we bring them in, we train them, we do all of that, and our goal is to bring them back every summer as they go through college. And they get to set their times, when they start, when they stop. That way, if they have certain things they need to do, then that's no problem. So it's, we're trying to really focus on those kids that wanna get into a logistics-type business. But I like this, not only because it is giving opportunity to our kids, but the opportunities that we're even giving to our teachers to do something outside of the box.
Something that, you know, I have to think that you do the same thing day after day
after day. You know what? You go through a slump at some point, and being able to have something new and exciting and not have to do the same thing every day is amazing to be able to offer kids and students.
You know, I did put this in, in the Insider one week, and we met on Tuesday with staff, sort of invited staff that wanted to learn a little bit about it, and if, to sort of get our interest. And we actually on Monday, we're, I wonder how many people are gonna show up? Dr. Gaines said to have a spreadsheet and have them sign up on there, and we didn't do, but, so we were sort of, we were, we were sitting there thinking, gosh, I hope we have at least a handful of teachers.
Right, right.
And by that time, teachers started walking in, we had over 20 teachers that were interested in just this concept. So that's exciting to know, and that's a good message that we're, you know.
Not at all, thanks.
No, we had a few middle school teachers and, and are interested from both, a couple of middle schools.
But we recognize the need. But we recognize the need. I'm sure that, you know, in, they've been constrained, sometimes we're constrained by, you know, our current environment. And even though you might identify that this student has this need and it'd be great to be able to do X, Y, or Z, you might not have been able to do that. And so, they probably have great ideas around being able to reach students who have interest or students who have need or whatever might be the circumstance. And so, that's great energy to harness and put that big jigsaw puzzle together and all those ideas to see what the possibilities could be.
My teachers came to me today and they're all over the place with ideas.
That's great.
That's great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to-
That first thing is to meet board.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the audit approval.
I didn't say we were.
Just for a guy. Consider the whole, sorry.
Our audit is conducted by Daniel Jones and Associates. And tonight we have Corey Roper here to present the audit report. So, Corey?
I can't believe everyone didn't stick around for the audit presentation.
There's a smile on his face.
Our firm was engaged to do a financial audit of the school district for the year and it, the school year ended June 30th, 2016. Instead of me going through this whole spiel about everything, I'll kind of hit the highlights and kind of talk about that because it's been a long evening so far, I think, for everybody. So, our, we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. What that is, that's basically the highest opinion that we can issue for the district in regards to the financial statements. So, that's a good thing. There were no federal, or no, there was no financial findings for this year. There was no state findings. There was no St. Louis audit findings. So, it's pretty much a clean audit report. Can tell you that this is a long process. It starts in July and as you can see on the date of the audit report, it wasn't finalized until the 31st of October. So, there's a lot that goes into this, working with Marshall and staff, going through a lot of different documents and so forth. Before the beginning of this school audit season, our firm, our audit managers got together and they reviewed audit reports that were done by the state auditor's office of school districts. So, they looked at Rockwoods, Fox, Springfield School District. And they kind of looked to see what areas the school districts were being written up for. And so, what we did is we implemented a lot of new testing this year to kind of cover some of those points. So, I can, Marshall can attest to this, that we looked a lot more into some areas that maybe weren't looked at as much in years past. But like, we looked, we did additional testing with payroll, with the bidding processes, with as far as construction, bank bids. Let's see, what else? Different bidding procedures. So, I can assure you that after looking through that, there was nothing that we need to report to the board. So, that's definitely a good thing. So, I guess in conclusion, I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Don't ask me how you guys compare to like Limburg because I-
We just want to know we're better than Fox.
Well, I think, I hope so.
Yeah, somebody's in trouble.
We're all going, that's the case.
So, I have a question. And I ask this question every year, but do you take a special look at credit cards?
Yes.
Credit cards typically are-
That's part of that additional testing that we did. I mean, we looked at credit card, but we looked at even a huge, a bigger sample this year. And we look at everyone's charges. We look at the superintendent's charges. We look at everyone's, so.
Do you make sure that the credit card charges, because like, that's where our neighboring school district has gotten themselves into a lot of trouble. So, you look at the credit cards to make sure that the charges are reasonable.
They've been authorized, that they've gone through the approval process.
That they make sense in terms of like a car rental or something that's reasonable.
I thought you said a car.
New car.
New car rental, yeah. And then you also mentioned payroll. So, you also make sure like when board approves salaries for administrators or for staff, that the salaries that they're actually drawing match what the board has approved.
Correct.
Because that's another thing that neighboring school district did. And how many samples do you take on like the credit cards and also the salaries?
We looked at several months' worth of credit card charges.
Several months' worth of credit card. That's, that's great to hear. And then in terms of comparing payroll to board-approved salaries, out of all the employees we have, how many employees might you say that you've made that comparison to?
Well, we looked at the highest-paid people in the district. We looked at all-
Like the superintendent?
Superintendent, you know, the top 20.
Which is what the state audits go after.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And then we do, we do sampling for the, the rest of the school population.
Makes sense. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's good to hear.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you so much. Sorry for your long wait.
Can I get a recommendation?
I would move to approve the audit report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I almost forgot how to do that. We've been here so long tonight. Budget adjustments.
This should be on e-boards, but it'll be a lot easier to see.
Actually, I appreciate that.
So, basically, this will be pretty quick and easy, I think. We went through, as we've talked about during the budget process, you budget, you get it approved by the end of June, but there's many things that are unsettled. So, all this is, is really an update of some of the things that have come into focus since our budget was approved at the end of June. The first page is the revenue, like the revenue financial statement format. And basically you'll see in the adjustment column, all the way down to the bottom, we're adjusting revenues by increasing them about $1.1 million. And that's pretty much the same number as the local tax number that we talked about earlier in the tax rate hearing in September, where we had the increased assessed value and that produced a lot of additional revenue over what we had additionally, originally budgeted. So, essentially, you've got a lot of other line items on here and they pretty much net out to zero. So, the net impact is really from the local taxes that we talked about in September. If you move to the next page on expenses, you'll see in the adjustment column, very bottom, expenses are increasing $2.4 million, but that's the result of the debt prepayment that we also talked about, I think it was in September. So, by prepaying the debt, we save over about $100,000 over the course of four years or so. So, when you go to the next page, it's a cash flow summary with the adjusted budget. And if you look in the second tier of boxes where it says net gain and loss, you'll see an operating number and you'll see a non-operating number. The operating number is now adjusted to show $1,990 gain and that is about $650,000 higher than what the adopted budget was back in June. So, on first look, when you're looking at the revenue and expense sheet, if you net those two together on the first two pages that we talked about, it's going to look like, if you net the revenues against the expenses, it's going to look like our expenses increased a net of $1.3 million. But it's really important to understand the components of that net increase between operating and non-operating. So, on this page that we're looking at now, the operating piece actually went up $650,000 because most of the local tax piece goes into operating. The non-operating is now at a negative $1,837 compared to the original budget of $138,000 positive. And that's about a $2 million decrease. Well, that's because your debt prepayment, your debt expense is non-operating. So, at first glance, you might say, wow, our budget has decreased by $1.3 million. But that's not really the true picture. The true picture is, we really have a favorable budget adjustment in the operating section, which could somewhat be recurring. There's no guarantee. But that's really where we're at as of today with all the current known facts. Our operating budget is now a bigger gain by over $650,000. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. You know, it's been mentioned briefly about, you know, the election can change things. We don't know what the state of, you know, Missouri is going to be doing going forward. But as of today, that's where we stand. The non-operating, that's a one-time thing. It's a debt prepayment and we're going to be in the exact same spot within a, you know, three or four years as we would have been anyway, because we just prepaid the debt. We would have paid it anyway. So, anyway, that's important to note. So, that's really the highlight of the comments. In, in essence, we really have a favorable budget adjustment on the operating side. Any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I got a question. On the third page, you mentioned, under, on the, the bottom, towards the right-hand side, operating adjusted budget summary. Adopted budget loss, I didn't follow exactly the $2.6 million. Is that part of the prepayment? Is that the reason it's a negative $2.6 million?
Are you talking about on the adopted budget page or the-
Yeah, the adopted budget, which is page three. In the lower right-hand corner, there's a small section that says operating adjusted budget summary.
That's page two.
Adjusted budget, not on the adopted budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. It says, yeah, operating adjusted budget summary. And it says page two, but it's actually the third page on your handout. But it does say page two.
You know what? That's probably a piece that was not supposed to be published.
Okay.
So, I would strike that part out.
No, but I didn't get that because, I mean, that's kind of implying we approved a budget that had a $2.6 million-
Right. I apologize. That's, that's when you're doing worksheet notes and it doesn't get taken off. So, I'd strike that whole thing.
Okay, that's fine. Because the budget we adopted back in-
You'll see on the, you'll see on the adopted budget page, there is nothing in that space.
Yeah.
So, I apologize.
That's okay. I just, I just want to make sure.
Just wanted to see if you were paying attention. You got an A.
I passed, right. So, there we go. And then back in June, I think, I don't know if we've talked about this since June, but when we adopted the budget back in June, you said end of June it would be 23.4% reserves. And then in fiscal '17, you said it would be 23.3. So, now we're going to 25 and 25.3. Where does the 2% change come from?
Well, and that's your, that's your operating, the favorable adjustment that we have to our operating budget. So, when you look on the operating line item that says $1,990, if you compare that to the next page back, which is $1,332, it's on your, your fourth page back, adopted budget.
Okay, yeah.
So, you see in that same spot, operating says $1,332.
Right, on the fourth page, right.
Yeah, that's, that's what we originally passed in June.
Okay.
Then now with these budget adjustments, this adjusted budget page now shows that that operating gain is now $1,990. So, our operating gain has increased over $650,000 over what we originally budgeted. And that's because of the local tax revenue.
And for this fiscal year's, fiscal year '17.
Yeah. So, when you go back to the revenue adjustment page and you see the current taxes up at the top of $1,125 and you go all the way down to the bottom to $1,109, that's increasing our revenues.
Right.
And most of that falls to the operating side.
I just meant that the percentages have increased because back in June it was 23.4.
Right.
And so now we're at 25.
Right. That's the impact of the $650,000 favorable.
$650,000 would not be 2% on our budget, would it?
It's not. It's 2% of operating expenses.
It still shouldn't be. $650,000 still shouldn't be 2%. Our operating expenses are around 90 million, right?
Operating expenses would be around eight, I think maybe around the 80, 85 million mark.
Well, this year maybe higher because of Prop R.
Yeah. I can, I'll check the calculation.
Because it, back in, unless we did a budget adjustment, I may have missed it. Unless we did a budget, we haven't done one since June, have we?
No, we haven't.
Yeah, okay. I didn't think so.
I can check the calculation.
Yeah. Because we're two, I mean, that's good. We're 2% higher, but that would be $2 million approximately.
Right. I'll, I'll check the calculation and let you know.
Depends what is 2% of it.
And then, and A-plus, yeah, there. And then the other question is, the VIC revenues have decreased. Is there a reason why the, the VIC numbers have dropped?
Well, it's the, the overall calculation. We had a true-up from, you're always estimating what you think you're going to have. And I know that there was a negative true-up for this year compared to, based on last year's actual results. So, I know in general, our students are fairly constant, but in the end, the formula, that's what the formula for VIC.
That's what they paid us.
Right.
Even though we had a slight increase in students, didn't we? I think we had a-
No, I think we had an increase.
Or was it the same? We may have, okay.
Yeah, I don't think that we're not, at all.
Frozen, okay.
We froze it.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Nope.
I'll move to approve the budget adjustments as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thanks, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thanks.
Next, we have, the district has agreed to host the MSBA Regional Seven Spring Meeting. That's going to be on April 27th. That is also the same night that we have a board meeting. So, we're looking to move the board meeting back to Wednesday, the 26th. So, if I can get a motion to approve the recommendation.
I can tell you right here, I won't be there.
Unacceptable.
Which day is that?
To which one? The 26th or the 27th?
To the Wednesday.
The Wednesday, okay.
Because I'm in Jeff City, January through May, Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
So, just heads up.
Okay.
Unless you guys want to make it a Friday?
No.
Friday's fun.
I've streamed. Yeah, I'll tune in on-
Yeah, we'll just figure it out.
I work on a Friday.
And we can get to the debate of-
Skype, Skype.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make them up. I mean, I will.
Moved.
You make a motion to- To move, to move the board meeting in April to April 26th.
Second. Lisa's seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There's an officer.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
All right. Motion carries six one.
Why move it to a day I can't-
All right. We're going to move on to patron comments. We've got two people signed up. Susan, if you want to come on up.
April 24th.
26th, Wednesday, six.
You know the rules. You have three minutes.
Trust me.
Y'all know I hate public speaking.
So, it's six or 6:30.
Wow.
It'll be 6:30.
Wait a moment.
In front of everybody here, this is not one of them.
What public, this is practice.
You are correct.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Board, administration, everybody that has worked hard during this year has answered my bazillion questions. I personally say, let's talk was created for me. And I've heard I need a new hobby. Anyway, in the next few months, you guys are going to be making a lot of decisions that's going to affect the future of our district and hopefully make Melville a destination district. I come here today as a parent for the next five years and then a taxpayer. And I've helped at so many fundraisers I can't even count to get money for school needs. A year ago, we were celebrating Prop R and the money to get the things we need for the district. Then in January, the School of Innovation, this great, awesome, neat idea was introduced and I said, at what cost? My question throughout the year has been, at what cost? I just kind of wanted to know. And maybe even back in September, my card of questions was 20 miles in front of the horse. But I watched the October presentation and I still had more questions than answers. Is it wrong to ask if the School of Innovation is the right project at the right time implemented the right way for the district? Can we support it in its future needs? What projects or other needs might be put on hold to get this going and keep it going? I guess I really didn't need four pages of questions to ask. And I apologize if I've wasted any time and everybody because, but I'd rather get the answers from the people in the know than get online and get a whole bunch of things. We're two months away from the last presentation and the board decision and there's still many more questions than answers. I feel we need the questions answered sooner than later to keep this project on its own timeline. I would hate to get in January and have all these questions still not answered. I do feel after going to the meeting last night, it was my first finance meeting, I didn't go gloss-eyed and go, what? I kind of understood what was going on. And I do feel like answers are trying to be, we're working with real numbers, real resources. And I do feel the district is trying to make a good decision, that we are making strides to collect the information and do the right thing at the right time for the, in the right way, to keep the district moving forward for all the students in the district. And that's really what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Mike Shaw?
You know, we've gone too long with the kiddos.
He's got six minutes now.
Yeah, you can get six minutes. You have representative group?
Yes, yes. Trey Polshaw, no. Call tight. No, no, leave that alone. It's not ours. So, I'm here to speak for the Special School District Parent Advisory Council. Basically, that is, that's a, a group that is made up by the Special School District. And it's, there's a, I'm the Melville School District rep, as well as Alex Taylor. And each school district has an opportunity, sorry. And each school district has an opportunity, sorry.
Noah.
Oh, he's fine.
Each, each school district has an opportunity to have representatives to, you want to go up there?
Hey, come here.
To go and meet. And then our jobs are to come back and report back on the meeting. Meetings are held monthly. I'm in the process of standing up a local Melville PAC Ed with Alex Taylor. She's also, she's a more senior member. She's been doing this for a long time. Anyway, I wanted to report back to the board so that everybody got a chance to know what this group was, and that we're working with some other parents to try to stand up a PAC Ed down here for the local. But just wanted to really quick go over the meeting notes from last night. So basically, they, they went over their, their policy, and they went over their policy. And one of the things was cyberbullying. There are some new state laws that went in. And the between, because the, the way that our PAC Ed works, they work with a partnered home district, and then they go with the more restrictive policy. So like, if there's a more, if the SSD's bullying, cyberbullying policy is better than, say, ours or whoever's, then they go with that. That's what they recommend. Anyway, so they went with that. They updated some of that. They're also, they also, we worked on a SSD PAC Ed trifold brochure to update it. It hadn't been updated in quite some time. And we're, we took voting on that just to kind of summarize it and to bring more awareness. They have a, an IRC, which is a big media library where parents can go and teachers can check out material that will help out their children. That's a resource. There's a family resource center that has all kinds of information on this or that for parents who have kids with special needs. And then finally, we, we kind of just went over the minutia of this and that. But I just wanted to pretty much come here and give a report on that, and I would like to try to do that every, every month.
Love it. That'd be great.
So hopefully, we'll be able to put some, some video meetings on there so other parents can get up there and go. There also, it's also a primary area where if you have an issue, you can bring your concern, whether it's IEP, or transportation, or anything along the spectrum of being a parent with a special needs kid. So anyway, that's my spiel, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Suzanne, Mike, thank you, guys, for sticking around.
Yes.
To be able to make your comments tonight. We appreciate it. Um, moving on to closed meeting.
I move to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, discussing lease, purchase, or sale of real estate pursuant to statute 610.0212, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees pursuant to statute 610.0213, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, statute 610.0219, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, statute 610.02113, and existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property, statute 610.02119.
Second.
We'll call. We'll call. Jamie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes. All right, to close, we do.
Stop that. Be right there.
Oh, I'm back there? Okay.